We're gonna stand right up there and so they can... Yes, and then we'll just turn around and put your forms over there and we'll... Yep.
Hopefully they don't fall off.
Jamie Warren, how are you doing?
Good evening, how... I'm good, how are you?
Gosh, these are nice. Did you bring these along?
No, I don't know.
Dan King brought those by. Daniel King.
Dan King, alright.
This top one is yours, so when you... yeah, and then the other one is...
How nice. Well, thank you. I... thank you. I appreciate it, thanks so much.
Did you get one?
Now, where's your home? Okay, so not far from here. One of our former student superintendents was Superintendent Kroger, I think when he first started out, Kent King. I think so. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Now, are you in session right now? You are still in session, aren't you? Till May, May, is that right? So will you have to go back to Jeff City tonight, or no? Oh, good. Good, good. I bet, I would feel worn out too. So I need to...
You guys were campaigning in the heat of the campaign.
I mean, I'd call the meeting to order and then... And then go on to here.
Fall, didn't it?
It is, summer and fall, I'm sure. Up on the corner at 10...
Where are you going?
It was one of those community... I think it's permanently leased to there.
And so bring all these.
Heard about that the other day from Rogers.
Craig, what do we call the...
Residency committee.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Okay, to begin the meeting, I'd like to ask a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same? Alright, first thing we'll go to is student recognition. Tonight, we're very excited to have with us Representative Mayhew from the Missouri State House of Representatives. He's going to join us to recognize the qualifiers for state from the Rolla High School wrestling team. So Representative Mayhew, if you'd please come to the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you to the board for having me here tonight. If I could get the coaches and the team down here, I'll make the presentation.
Yay. We've seen these guys.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I understand. Absolutely. Anything we can do to keep them from staring at a phone is a good thing. That is one thing about wrestling, it is really hard to play on your phone and wrestle at the same time. I only know that from watching, maybe you guys have figured out a way. Well, on behalf of the Missouri State House of Representatives, and in recognition of your accomplishments, I would like to present you with this resolution from the Missouri State House of Representatives. Yay.
Show it to us, Nate.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we see?
Very nice.
Beautiful. Coach, would you like to say anything tonight?
Tell us where you're gonna hang that.
Yeah, yeah, where's that? And Representative Mayhew, I told him he needs to see that wrestling room.
That's right, he definitely needs to see it again.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely, I was gonna say on our way out, I'll definitely, and I'll show him where we're gonna hang this in the room. We'll definitely show it, actually, probably right above Coach Haskell's plaque. I've got, if you haven't been in the room, we've got all of the plaques of the former coaches and all of their records and accomplishments there, and every team record hanging down in between the windows with the parents' view in the waiting room, so that way everybody can see it. You know, it's definitely earned, and we definitely appreciate everything that you do, not just for our team and our community, but throughout the state. We appreciate you and recognizing us as well, thank you.
Thank you very much, and good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is board member recognition... Recognition, sorry, resignation, to cut it that way. The district and the board would like to recognize Mr. Jamie Myers for his 11 years of service to the Board of Education. So Jamie, if you would come around front.
I want you to come up front?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll give you this, but after you say a few words, we'd like to get a picture of you with the entire board.
Okay.
So first, what we have from you, we have a few things. Okay, first we have, just a nice little photograph of you. My signature, Dr. Mead's, that was a treasure, treasure forever. Now, this is what we really thought you'd like, and that's a treasure. Mr. Myers has made lots of... And so this will help you figure it out. Now, we were gonna try to put a name to everything, but...
We don't know them all.
We don't know. We didn't want to spend the money on that big a frame.
No, you're on the left. Yeah, then we won't.
Would the whole board then come up and Dr. Bear? It was not mine. I think it was Charlie's.
I'll sit down.
Alright.
Thank you, it's very nice. So, you know, I thought a lot about, because I knew I'd have to say something. So, one of the things I've spent a lot of time thinking about, in addition to just what we've done as a board over the last 11 years, which has been a lot, right, there's been some great things done in this school district, from facility improvements to hiring important leadership, and all those things are important, right? But, you know, the thing I think that sticks out to me more than anything through that time is the fact that the best decisions that I've made as a board member came because we worked as a group, right? We... one, Aaron does a great job, Aaron and other folks in his administration team do a great job of front-loading information, right? I'm sure you all recognize that, that we don't have to make... we haven't had to make fast decisions. There's times, yeah, when you have to address an immediate issue, but typically, that's come over time. And during that time, we've had the opportunity to discuss, to share ideas, and I think really come to good decisions because of that. And I think that's an important role that we all have taken, and in my tenure on the board, I think we've done a good job of that. So I congratulate all of you, both current and past board members, for being a part of that. Because I just think that's been so important, and Aaron, thank you for, you know, your forethought in doing that. Giving us information and not steering us, but just saying, "Here it is," you know, and helping us come to consensus. And so I think that's a testament to Aaron and his staff and all of you, so I appreciate that very much. If it's not too corny, I thought I'd share one thing with you. I do this often when I get a chance to talk to a group, but I got a poker chip for each of you, so take a poker chip. These are real poker chips, too. And so these poker chips represent something, and you've heard me talk before when we were doing the book study not too long ago, about protective factors, right? And so every kid, when I think about kids and kids in our school district, every kid comes into the building every day, and they have a stack of poker chips, their stack of poker chips, and everybody has an individual stack. And poker chips represent protective factors, that's what we call them in the work I do. And protective factors are things that help them make good decisions, things that help them do well in school, things that help them succeed academically, to work hard, and do all those things that we hope and pray our kids will do every day, right? So those are protective factors, and every kid comes to school with their own stack. Some kids have a tall stack, right, because of the environment in which they come from, and what they've learned, and the support they've gotten, and so on and so forth. And those kids are the ones that are willing to go out for the team, that are willing to make good decisions, that are willing to raise their hand in class, willing to take positive chances, right? Kids with high stacks of poker chips. But some kids, as we all know, don't have a high stack of poker chips, they don't have those protective factors. And so I think our job and the decisions that hopefully I've made as a board member, and I hope all of you as well, is every day, what do we do? How do we make decisions that help every kid build their stack of poker chips? So, anyway, that's what I leave you with. So thank you all very much.
Well, you're not gonna be gone from the community, so we'll see you around, and you're always a bulldog, so...
Thank you, that's right.
We appreciate your service to children of our community, so God bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah, anybody?
Jamie, you were my mentor several years ago, and I just appreciate how helpful you were and insightful, how insightful you were, and how easy it was to ask you questions, and seemed how easy your answers came. So I just appreciate your experience and what you shared with me.
Thank you.
It's very nice.
Yeah, Jamie, I really appreciate, you know, having you on the board, and you've been a lot of help, just watching you as you kind of guide and direct us through decisions that we make as well. And also, I don't know, a lot of you realize that Jamie does so much for our community. He is always out there, and he participates in a lot of different committees, and really just is working hard for our children and our community, and I just really appreciate that.
If I can say something for a second? Jamie, Mr. Myers here was the first person from the board that I've met. I interviewed him for an article that I was writing for our high school newspaper, Echo, and the article was about his work with prevention consultants. And to know that as a student, and, you know, speaking from my fellow peers, to know that there's someone in our community whose entire life's work, it seems, is to look out for us, is incredibly helpful. And even though I haven't necessarily been in a position where I've necessarily needed that extra poker chip, for my peers, knowing that they have someone who's looking out for them, it makes me feel better every day. And it's very nice to know that you're on the school board, you've served so much time, and in the community, and your other positions, working to protect the peers that I care about, so thank you.
Well, thanks, Lauren. Wow, that's very nice.
Jamie, after that, I have nothing to say.
I would like to say, Jamie, that your input will be missed because of your work. You had amazing insight into our students.
Yes, you did.
Thanks.
Yes, you did.
And we'll miss that.
Yes.
So, you know, we... first time I ran for the school board, you were on the ballot with me. I don't consider you an opponent. At that time, I told you at that time you weren't an opponent, so you did a good job.
I've always thought we were a pretty good pair.
I thought so too, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Jim.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you. That's very nice. Well, thank you all very much. Best wishes, best wishes to Shannon as she joins the board, she'll be a great board member.
Thanks, okay, bye, Jamie, thank you.
You can take your agenda with you if you'd like.
I'll take that from Shannon.
I don't know, she's got one. Sure? That was the raffle.
That's right.
I asked him if he needed help, then I carried him all back in.
There you go. Okay, continue. Questions from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda, will be granted five minutes to make a presentation to the board, and do please state your name for the record. Okay, presentation on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any items on the agenda will be granted five minutes to make a presentation, and please state your name for the record. Okay, we'll go on to board reorganization, first thing. Acceptance of the election results or returns. The district had two opening seats for three-year position director. The board will certify the election results for these positions.
Need a motion, a motion to accept the election return.
A motion to accept the election results.
I'll make a motion to accept the election results.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Okay, we will... this current Board of Education will adjourn for the purpose of ending that this board's functioning and permitting a new board member to be formed, as Dr. Zales will now take over.
Yeah, the first thing on the agenda on IOMC is the oath of office to our newly elected board members, Mr. Packard and Dr. Lusk, so you guys will come forward. Ms. Myra Reagan, our secretary of the board, will administer the oath of office to you.
Okay, good afternoon. I do, state your name.
Aye.
You?
I do, James Packard.
Solomon Swer.
Solomon Swer. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Missouri. And that I will faithfully and impartially... Discharge the duties of the school director. And for District 31.
County of Phelps.
County of Phelps. State of Missouri. Do the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Jim and Shannon.
Thank you. Congratulations, serving as temporary chair, with an emphasis on temporary, will accept the nominations for office of President of the Board of Education.
I would like to nominate Charlotte Jamison for president.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll cease nominations, and call for a recommendation that Mrs. Charlotte Jamison become President of the Rolla 31 Board of Education. Will you entertain a motion for that?
I'll make the motion for that.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, congratulations, Mrs. Jamison. So you need to switch seats.
Okay.
You're throwing me out.
Just really liked sitting next to her.
Bye-bye.
Or I guess you could push the gavel over.
So, you pick up here?
You go to appointments and seek...
Okay, we'll go to appointments. It's recommended that the board appoint individuals to fulfill the following assignments. Take nominations, or we just go right to a motion? Take nominations?
Nominations for president-elect.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Jim Packard for president-elect.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? And so does that count as our motion and second?
It can, you're in charge. I was only in charge for a little bit, I said that. When I'm in charge, I do things my way.
I'll let Jane back.
Now I know do things my way.
Jane!
You're on your own.
All in favor of Jim Packard as our president-elect, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And would like to get nominations for the office of treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Carla Clayton for that.
I'll second that nomination.
All in favor of Carla Clayton as our treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye also. Any opposed, same sign. It's a little hard, you have to say aye twice. Okay, so do we need to move her, or we just stay where we're at for now?
She can stay.
Okay.
I didn't, we never did have a designated place for treasurer, but again, you're in charge, you can do what you want.
I would let Jane ask, right here?
Right here?
I like Jane right here. Okay, let's move on. Um... We're appreciated.
New standard being set.
That is hilarious. We're gonna move on to our committee appointments. There are several committees that we all serve on, and I know some of you have mentioned that maybe you'd like to change, or maybe be on the same committee, so let's just go down the list, is that okay?
Yes.
So the A-plus schools committee, Jim, is that something you're interested in sticking around?
I can still do that, yeah.
And for the core board, Carla, you said you were interested in staying on that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anyone else at once is interested in that? The crisis management team, and I believe this is historically the president, president-elect, and treasurer, so that will change to me and Jim and Carla. And then ESEA Title I, Mr. Housam, you're good for that, right?
He's the only one for that.
Excellent. The audit committee. Right now, Carla, myself, and Jim, is there anybody else who is interested in being involved in that? I'm happy to stay there, but if someone else is interested...
I'd be interested in that, I was, yeah.
I'm happy to let him take my spot, I mean, that's... it's three, is all we can have maximum on there, right?
Yeah. Carla should be on there as treasurer.
She's treasurer.
And I would like to stay on there.
Yeah, I would like you to stay on there too. So we'll take my name off and put Dr. Creedee on there. And then MSB delicate and alternate, and this has historically been the president as the delicate and the president-elect as the alternate, so we'll add Jim. Policy committee. Shannon, historically, our newest folks on the board are on the policy committee, it's a good kind of learning situation.
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
You can take my name off.
Okay, and...
I'll stay.
Okay, just wondered. We'll need to put someone in place, Jamie, on the special education committee.
I'd be glad to do that, no one else wants that?
I think you'd be great, Jane, if it's okay with you.
Great.
And then, you're also still okay on the TAB committee?
Unless somebody else would like that. It stands for Teacher Administration Board, and it's just, I... we did not even have a meeting this year, so...
Well, unless somebody really wants it, I think Jane is a great spot for that, great person for that one. The residency waiver committee, of course, Mr. Housam is there, and then Mr. Frolick, and we need to either just take Jamie off, or if someone else wants to be on that...
I'd like to take his spot on that.
Okay. Okay, is this where we should have somebody for Shannon, or do that at another spot?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, we also have someone on the board who serves as a mentor for you for your first year, kind of a point, you can ask anybody questions, but kind of a point person, I believe Jane said she would do that for you. Thank you, Jane.
You're so welcome, Shannon, I'd be glad to work with you, so...
Good deal.
We'll talk about that after the meeting, or when we go into close session afterwards, after the meeting.
Did we get all of those? Okay, we'll go on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda is utilized by the Rolla Board of Education as a means of dealing with routine matters, which must be considered by the board but require a minimum of discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information supporting the items listed on the consent agenda well in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education members welcome to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason. Normally, all items on the consent agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion. We have items A through J. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through J.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, new business.
Yeah, under Item A, the Board Policies, the Policies before you represent the third of three meetings we had over the course of last month. We bring before you, they've been with MSBA. We made some corrections to Policy INC. that were noted by Mr. Packard earlier in the day, but those have been before the Policy Committee and vetted by the administrative team and the members of the Committee, to MSBA, and now back before you for adoption.
Any other discussion about those items?
I'll make the motion to adopt the following Board Policies.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And then for bids, is this Dr. Dare?
Yes, ma'am. So if you'd like to look over on page 59A, if you'll recall from last meeting, every three years, we bid our therapeutic services. We approved OTPT and Vision Services last month. Looking at our speech-language therapy services, our goal is usually, our goal is always, to have our own employees in those positions, but we do have to contract because of various factors in that. One of those involves supervision of our SLPIs and SLPAs. So if you looked down that list of bids, you'll see that a lot of those are from out of state and some substantially, but there's a lot of teletherapy-type things going on where they're doing those supervisions and that through long-distance arrangements. It's really quite fascinating to see the kids, it doesn't bother the kids at all. They're used to video interactions and technology, so it's really quite amazing. But our recommendation to you tonight for our speech-language services is Carrie Page. She's worked for the district, currently works for the district in our early childhood program as a contracted person. And then Research to Practice, which is an MSBA vendor, so it's actually through MSBA, but they will do teletherapy supervision for our SLPA and SLPI.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Dare? Is there a motion to approve the bid?
I'd make the motion when we approve the bid as laid out by Dr. Dare.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Assessment updates.
It's too much quiet.
So I wanted to just update you tonight. Spring season is when a lot of assessment hits in the school district, both state assessment and then some other, some other forms of assessment that we do. So I wanted to update you on, these are the assessments we'll look at tonight. Grade level assessments, we usually refer to as the MAP test, end-of-course assessments we refer to as EOC, the ASVAB, the ACT, and the ACCESS, which I'll explain on the slide to their own, and then advanced placement testing at the high school. So first of all, the most typical type of assessment that people are aware of are the grade level assessments that we refer to as the MAP test. They are given to all students in grades three through eight in ELA in mathematics. And the ELA in mathematics test, we are in year two of those assessments coming online. So last year was the first year that we took this particular form of assessment. So ELA in math will be year two. The science test is new this year, so students in grades five and eight are where science is given, and we have not seen that test before. So we are anxious to see how that is going to be assessed. The new Missouri learning standards in science are quite rigorous and are often activity-based. So how they're going to be assessed, we will learn a lot in this first year, so year one. So just some information, these tests are written to the Missouri learning standards, which we adopted two years ago. It took a year to develop the test, so we are now rolling those out, and you'll see here at the high school level, we've got more new tests coming on the way. All of these tests are given online, so down through third grade, all the way through, it's given on computers in the district. That allows them to do some enhanced technology item types. So I know the achievement tests I took in school were all multiple choice. That grew into some writing that got graded, but now we're dragging and dropping, sorting things, drawing lines, moving things around. So it does allow for different types of assessment questions. And all of the students in the district take the MAP test. There is also the MAP A, which is the Alternate Assessment, which is given to those students with IEPs who have the most severe learning disabilities. So that is a very small percent, less than 1% of our students are on the MAP A. But the combination of the grade level assessment and MAP A will hit all students in grades three through eight. Then at the high school level, grades nine through 12, we give end-of-course assessments, often referred to as EOCs. Required assessment in each core content area. So in math, we are required to either give Algebra I, we are required to give Algebra I, or if students take Algebra I prior to entering high school, then they're required to take the Algebra II assessment. So they have to take one of those two. And again, that's a math test, so that's in year two. We took it for the first time last year. In English, sophomores take the English II assessment. In science, biology, this is year one, as I mentioned, for new science tests. So this is the first year that we'll give the new biology assessment. The biology assessment has always been one of our greatest strengths, the EOC tests at the high school level. So it's really, again, it will be a learning year for us to see how this new assessment aligns with what we're teaching and how we need to adjust. In social studies, the required test is US Government. This is a field test year for social studies, so all the students will take it. It will count for them. We are, we are held responsible for testing all students in each of the four areas before they graduate, so it will count, but we will receive no scores on the government test. This is a practice test year to allow them to build the operational test, which will be given next year. This is also an online assessment platform. I meant to say, go back to the grade level test. The MAP window coming up, we test in late April, early May, so we push it off. End-of-course assessments, we give a little bit sooner. We will be more mid to late April. As you'll see, we have to balance out a lot of assessments, and we need to get through end-of-course assessments so that we can then start rolling into the advanced placement exams after that. So all this timing has to work out just a little bit. Preparation for our students and our district overall. So there's a lot of work that goes into giving these tests. There will be, almost 7,000 tests will be given by the time you add everything up, all the different sessions that are given and everything else. So identifying devices and needs within the buildings, building a schedule so that we have everyone scheduled into a spot, making sure that our network can handle the number of students that will be hitting it at once with online assessments, spacing those out so that that works. It's a lot of teacher training that goes into it. So these are standardized assessment. They come with a lot of accountability on us to make sure that we do everything correctly in the testing environment. So all teachers that give the test go through training on security and proper practices when giving the test, and it's also important for all the teachers to get, to be familiar with the testing platform, because then, they will then train the students. When I put student practice, what I'm referring to there is student practice in the platform. We have practice assessments that aren't so much focused on content of the test, but on the tools of the test, to be able to drag and drop, draw a graph, construct a line, do all of those things. We don't want the assessment to be assessing their ability to use the tools. We want the assessment to be about their knowledge of the content. So we try to do a lot of things to familiarize students with the testing platform prior to being on there. Communication, the tests, I've said this many, many times, the tests are important, but they're not everything to us. So in working with our teachers and principals, we want to make sure that there is no communication that goes out that makes these high-stakes tests for kids. We do not want kids overstressed taking these assessments. Okay, so what we ask is that they come in relaxed. All we ask is that they give an honest, give their best honest effort. How they do is how they do. Okay, they're well-prepared. We want teachers to build the confidence in them that they've been preparing for this all year. This is not a single event. This is their ability to show all that they've learned the entire year. But having said that, we know some students will get stressed about this. It's a whole different environment. As I said, it's a standardized testing environment. So when you start setting those things up and reading from a script, it feels different in a classroom. Okay, but over and over, we want to communicate to our students, okay, don't stress, do your best. Okay, over and over again. So parent, I talked about student practice. In a letter that I prepared and given out to each of the buildings to send home to the grade-level students, there is a link to public practice tests that parents can get on. If they want, if you want to get on and see what the MAP test looks like that your students will be participating in, in the letter, there is a link that you can get on and take a few questions in all the subject areas and grade levels, and just get an idea of what the MAP test looks like. Okay, so that is all out there in public. Okay? So beyond those tests, which are the ones we typically talk about here in front of you for APR and state assessments, we do have some other assessments that go on during the school year, some at different times. First, the ASVAB test, which is the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test. That's given to all RHS sophomores in the fall. Gives an idea about interest inventories and possible future occupations. The ACT, I do want to mention this here. A few years ago, if you'll remember, the State of Missouri provided an ACT for all juniors in the state. In fact, not only provided, it was a required test for all juniors in the state. Funding ran out for that, and it was dropped. So since that time, for the past two years, we have not given an ACT. We have built into the budget for next year a district-funded ACT opportunity for all juniors at RHS. It's not a required test, so we're not going to make everyone take it. If you don't want to take it, you don't have to. Any junior that's interested in taking the ACT next year, we will have an ACT day at the high school that will be a testing site during the school day, and we will pay for one test for every RHS student that would like one. That's if you approve that, approve it in the budget, is built into the budget for next year. We anticipate the yearly cost of that would run around $10,000, plus or minus probably $1,000 or so, depending on how many kids sign up. We think that's a great opportunity, gives kids a chance to get that ACT score, some who might not otherwise do so, and we just think it will be a great practice for us. Access test. The access test is for our English Language Learners, ELL students. Each year, all of our ELL students take this assessment to measure their acquisition of English language skills. They are tested in four areas, speaking, listening, reading, and writing, four separate online assessments. Just for your knowledge, we have 154 students who are ELL students in the district who take the access test. Of those 154, 102 of them are at the elementary level. So by far, that is where our largest percentage is. Part of that's due to students passing the test and getting out, and part of it is also that a lot of the professors at the university who come or doing graduate work have young students finish their graduate work and then return to their home country, and it seems to be more of an elementary-age family when that happens. So we wrapped ELL testing up through February and early March, and we should get scores back here at any time.
Mr. Housam, what qualifies a student to be ELL? I don't know.
Sure. So ELL, when students enroll in our school district, there are questions on our enrollment form, asking if English is their primary language or if there are other languages spoken in the home. If it's indicated that there are, then we can give that student an ELL assessment and determine if they need ELL services, if they qualify for the program. So most of our, as you can imagine, most of our ELL students are tied to the university in some way. And then finally, advanced placement testing. So when we look at all, at the advanced placement courses that we offer at Rolla High School, each of those come with advanced placement testing, with kids that have the opportunity to earn scores for scholarships or college credit. We fit those in right at the end of the year, right after end-of-course assessments. So between the combination of end-of-course and advanced placement testing, there can be a lot of, a lot of assessment going on for students this time of year. So we try to manage it all, and again, give them confidence and let them know that they're prepared to do well and simply do their best. So that's a lot fairly quickly there on all the assessments that some have taken place and some are getting ready to hit in a big way here. Each building sets their own schedule, testing schedule, so parents out there should receive correspondence from your home building about your student's MAP testing schedule and some tips to help them prepare and do well. So I'd be happy to take any questions about any of the assessments in the district if you have any.
Those parent kind of sample question, the site, is that going to be in that information that comes home from their building?
It is. It's in the information letter that comes home from their building. You can also, it's not the easiest thing to find, but on the DESI website are additional resources that can point you there. Or call the building or contact me, and I'd be happy to get you the letter so that you can look at it.
It's pretty interesting to see. It's definitely not filling in the bubbles anymore.
It's definitely not filling in the bubbles, no.
Craig, the other testing they do throughout the year, that's the, what is that called again?
So the local testing that we do is called the NWEA assessment.
That was new this year?
That was new this year. That replaced, it's new. It replaced testing that we've always done. In the past several years, we've done quarterly common assessments in all subject areas, given that each form. The NWEA replaced that, so we no longer do the quarterly common assessments. We do the NWEA three times a year to measure student growth throughout this year.
And that's gone pretty well this year?
So far, it has gone well. We've given it twice. We do have one last window coming up at the end of the year after all of this testing to wrap up our local assessment. So I think we will need a full year's worth of results and looking at it to determine how much it helps and what we can identify.
Craig, what platforms, computer platforms are used for this testing?
So we are completely on either Chromebooks or desktops. We have iPads in the district, but they're not the, they're not super assessment-friendly, but the Chromebooks work well. Most of the assessments also come with listening components, so we have earbuds or headphones available. We encourage students to bring their own. A lot of students have their own earbuds, so we ask them to bring their own, and if not, we have some available to use. But we'll be doing a lot of it with wireless connections, which at times, and we have been, in the early days, we really worried about the load, the ability to handle that much data. But everything, they changed some of their technology to make it work more seamlessly, and that's our hope, that we, we want a quiet, seamless operation on the technology side. We want it to be about how the kids do.
Anything else for Mr. Housam?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kendra is up next. Mrs. Atkinson will come up and present an update for the fiscal year 20 budget, budget and salary info.
So each year about this time, we do present preliminary budget information, giving you a brief picture of what is happening at the state level, what we are anticipating for the district through the end of this year, and how we're planning for the next. So to lay a little bit of groundwork, give you some definitions that you'll hear throughout the presentation and throughout your tenure here on the Board. The SAT, or the State Adequacy Target, is determined by looking at approximately 150 performance districts throughout the state and the average amount of these districts that they spent to educate their students. It is designed to provide an adequate, not necessarily equitable, education. For fiscal year 19, the SAT is at $6,308 per weighted average daily attendance. The average daily attendance, or ADA, of course, is simply the average number of students in attendance each school day. Then we get down to the weighted average daily attendance. That is the ADA multiplied by a threshold percentage to determine if there is a higher concentration of students in subgroups that typically require more resources to educate. If so, that number will then be multiplied by a given weight, and the district will then receive additional funding for those students. The three weighted subgroups include special education, limited English language proficiency, and low income. Part of the foundation formula is the dollar value modifier. That is the cost of living adjustment for different areas in the state that have a higher cost of living than the state median. And then the other piece of the foundation formula is the local effort. That local effort is static at our 2005 amount of assessed valuation and property tax revenue. This allows our district to potentially experience revenue growth as the district's assessed valuation increases. assessed valuation increases. So looking at our current year budgeted revenues by source of funding, you can see that about 35% of our revenue comes from, uh, the basic foundation formula from the state and the next highest level is from our local property taxes. So looking at state general revenues, uh, right now, at the most recent data I've received, the consensus revenue estimate is up about 1.7% over last year's. However, general revenue collections overall are down 5%. This data was as of the end of March. Individual income tax collections are down 8%. That's an important figure because the majority of our state general revenue is from individual income taxes as opposed to sales and corporate income tax. So House Bill 2 is what provides, uh, funding for the Department of Education. So the governor is currently recommending a $61 million increase. That increase would basically fully fund the formula, uh, for next year and to do that, the SAT, the State Adequacy Target, would be at $6,375 per weighted ADA. However, at this time, we have not heard any recommendation from the House or the Senate hence the question marks on my slide, so hopefully as we move forward in the coming weeks, we should be starting to get some more information in order to more accurately create our budget for next year and make some decisions. So looking at local property taxes, uh, we calculate that by taking the assessed valuation times the tax rate, times the historical collection rate to equal the budgeted property taxes for next year. I'm currently looking at just under $419 million in assessed valuation, that was the figures of December 31st, assuming that, uh, figure, it will probably adjust by the time I'll get another estimate from the, uh, from Dr. Groh, sorry. Um, however, right now, we're looking at an approximate revenue increase of $395,000. And this is just a trend of our local property tax, uh, growth over the last few years. Okay, so Proposition C is the 1% statewide sales tax that was, uh, passed in 1982 and it's collected on a statewide basis and then distributed locally. It is based on prior year weighted average daily attendance. However, Rolla is one of only a handful of districts in the state that does not have a Prop C waiver, therefore our local property taxes each year are reduced by an amount equal to one half of our Prop C monies received. So right now for this year, the way I understand it is that the revenues for Prop C remain strong, so we're looking at probably receiving about $1,009 per weighted ADA. I budgeted this year at a thousand. For next year, of course, it's next year, we're not entirely certain where we're going to, uh, where the revenues will come in, um, anywhere between $992 per weighted ADA or a hundred, or 1,036. So, I, right now for tonight's discussion, I've used $1,009 per weighted ADA, which results in $68,300 in revenue increase. And again, just our trend data for Proposition C revenue. And just going back to the foundation formula, again, that was, uh, most recent formula approved in 2005. Um, the SAT determined by the performance districts and the calculation is weighted average daily attendance times the SAT, times the dollar value modifier, less our 2005 amount of local effort to equal our state funding. And this is just, uh, look back at the SAT over the years. It is recalculated every two years, so it is currently 6308, next year will be 6375. And then going back over the weighting thresholds, that's the last few years of weighting thresholds, those are also recalculated every couple of years. And these weights are applied to the district's ADA, again, in order for the district to receive additional funding for student population subgroups. The lower the threshold, the sooner we reach an, a weighted ADA that results in more funding for the district. However, it is important to remember that there is not extra money available from the state to further fund these programs or these subgroups. The amount of state revenue available to all districts on a statewide basis is the same regardless of how it is allocated. So the foundation formula trend over the last few years. And then just to kind of recap the revenue, uh, sources, the major revenue sources we've been looking at tonight, the total, uh, increase in revenue is anywhere between 645,000 to 925,000, with the only factor in there is the change in the SAT. The 645,000 is based on an SAT of 6308, all the way up to 6375 resulting in 925,000. At this point in time, given, um, what we know about our state revenue collections, we're more inclined to budget for next year at $6,308. Again, that's the amount that is fully funded for this year, however, we just now, in the month of March, received payment based on 6308.
Say, say that again.
We just now in March of this year, so last month, received a fully funded payment of $6,308.
So last year, we budgeted at 6275, thinking that we wouldn't, uh, being conservative, so hence, rather than going to 6375 for calculations, it would be our mindset to stay at 6308 since we're just now receiving it.
Right.
So they go back and pick up the previous amounts?
So once it-
Based on 6308?
I believe that's how the calculation works, is that correct? That once it's fully funded at 6308, it somehow evens out for the entire school year?
Yes, and, and, uh, to go back to the, the thresholds too, uh, just like with early childhood, when the formula was fully funded, uh, it, it called for districts that, early childhood programming to receive ADA on those students in pre-K. We didn't qualify for that, however, that further slices that pie, that pie is not bigger, it just further slices the pie. So it's counterintuitive, you think it's really great when the thresholds increase, but what it does, it, it, uh, allows other people to, to call for that, for those formula dollars, so hence we've been real, um, and I feel bad for you, Shannon, uh, because there's a lot of terminology, the, the, a whole lot of terminology.
Yeah.
Wait, she's pretty savvy, I think she'll pass.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, so, um, that's where we're at now and, and when you looked at the range that, that she, uh, presents here with 6308 versus 6375, uh, we had our first meeting with Salary Committee, uh, this week and we're using 6308 as that number, so when she presents the number to you, it factors in the step increases, uh, if you gave a percent on base plus insurance, you're going to see, you know, what we're looking at, um, on a projection basis, so.
Where were we again, last year 6275, is that what we did?
That's what we factored in.
Yeah, it was 6241 was the actual, uh, and we were encouraged to go ahead and, some people do, they budget the full amount, that's, uh, we've never done that, uh, being a little skeptical and, and, you know, worried about withholds at the end of the year, but the other, the other danger is at the end of the year, if there is money, then it comes to us in a sum that we can't do anything with because it just, well, we can do it with the next year, but it's not at a point where you can really add, uh, accurately, uh, detect what salary and benefit, uh, amounts you can, you can project and give, which is why we have the balances we have to make sure we offset those wild fluctuations, so.
So a couple of questions, you may answer these. So for our pre-K kids that we're supposed to get reimbursed upon, is that included in our numbers?
The amount we would have been eligible for is 4% of the, uh, percentage of free and reduced lunch, uh, however, we don't go enough time with our students to qualify for that, so it would have been about 72 students, I think, would have been eligible on the formula, but we need to go more time.
How much more time?
I don't remember that off the top of my head.
Was not very much. There was a lot, there's a lot of logistics involved in trying to adjust that schedule with our transportation and the school buildings and all that to make that work. Um, and Jim, you are correct, at this time last year, the way I understood the, uh, guidance was that those figures could be included in our formula on further reading. Our students do not go along with us.
And just one other thing to throw out, it's also, our, our early childhood kids attend half day.
Yeah.
So it's not 72 full ADA.
That's great.
It would be cut in half.
Yeah.
And also, those kids must qualify for free reduced lunch also, which I think would further reduce that number.
The, the amount of funding is roughly $70,000 difference by not including, you know, the two of those students, so it's a very, very small question.
Hopefully that'll continue to get better and they'll become what kindergarteners are now, uh, it's good that it's in the conversation and fortuitous that we started, I mean, it was, it looked good in the beginning, but, um, our program is, is successful and it's hard to change that now, uh, given that the cooperation has to occur with the, the other schools that we participate with, that would, that schedule would alter considerably.
Then on the, my other question has to do with the property tax and how, whether or not any tip, uh, contribution is included in that line item?
It is. Any other questions regarding revenues before I move on to expenditures? Okay, operating expenditures budgeted for this year, uh, just under 80%, which is standard for about every year, go towards salaries and benefits. So that's where we're going to spend our time this evening focusing on for expenditures. So movement on the salary schedule is about $398,000. For every percentage increase to the base is $299,800. At this time, we are looking at a 12% health insurance increase to premiums. That inclu, in addition to the retirement calculation on that, uh, amounts to $465,400, resulting in 1.16 million dollars. The, if we were to do movement and 1%, that amounts to about 2.3% average salary increase. So I'm going to go to the next slide here and help explain the rationale behind that 12% health insurance increase. Our current fund balance as of March 31st is 2.4 million. That is 50% of one year's claims. According to our insurance brokers, Mr. Scott and Mrs. Breeven over at EPJ Insurance, uh, industry, by industry standards, that is a healthy fund balance. When we started this plan year, we were closer to 3 million, that's where we would like to see it remain if at all possible. Um, our services for our insurance carrier are currently out to bid, so we have been, or they have been receiving those bids for the last few weeks, uh, they hope to have all those bids in within two more weeks, about early May. We'll sit down and go over all of them, but we are looking at modifying the plan design such as higher deductibles, um, updating, hopefully coming up with a plan that we can update the pharmacy benefit manager where it would allow for us to carve that out, um, and have rebates coming back to the district rather than to the insurance carrier. That's an important component because about 46% we had, experienced 46% increase in our pharmaceutical claims over the last two years. Um, Dr. D, do you have anything to add to the insurance discussion?
No, I think that, yeah, that certainly covers it. So our hope is through the bid process that, that we will beat that 12% down.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and we'll look at some plan design things in that and, um, again, Kendra mentioned the pharmaceutical plan, there's some things we can look at there to hopefully reduce that number. So that 12%, what we feel like that represents at this time is, uh, if there are no changes and we want to maintain the health of the program, that's what we would have to look at, at least as a starting point, but hopefully we'll be able to, to address that.
So this next slide, you can kind of see, um-
What is that?
Right, I was hoping to be a little more clear on the screen, but the dark red line at the top, those are our, uh, percent, budgeted percent increases to our insurance, uh, premiums. The medium red line there is what we actually increased, um, each year over the last few and the pink line that's all over the place is our fund balance. Uh, the bit of a spike we saw in fiscal year 17 is primarily due to the $500,000 that the board has, um, had agreed to transfer to our medical fund. Um, you can see last year, we did have a really good plan year actually, which was a factor in not increasing the 8% that we had budgeted and instead only increasing 5%. However, like I mentioned, in the last six months, we've lost $450,000. So, that graphically explains why the 12%. So looking at budgeted operating balances, um, last year, we ended up with a 32.83% fund balance. Again, the floor is 17%, that would be the amount required to, uh, pay our obligations for two to three months, given no state, um, and other funding. After our current, our most recent budget updates, we are budgeted to have a 23.14% fund balance at the end of this year. However, because we, like we've been talking tonight, we do budget conservatively and I've been looking at some projections for this year, I am anticipating that we'll end closer to 32%.
Good.
As a frame of reference, um, this time last year, we estimated that we would end at 29.45%, we had budgeted for 24% and again, we came in at 32.83%. So, we'll see if we can kind of keep that trend going. And this is just a recap of budgeted ending fund balances for this year versus projected. And going out a couple of years, again, just starting with ending, uh, projected ending fund balance for this year and then assuming a 1% increase to the base and then anywhere from 2% to 5% increases for revenues and expenditures, we would look at next year ending at 25.3% and the following at 17.66%. And then the 0% scenario is on the right. Just to recap our budget process, we do begin having discussions for budget back in January. Uh, we've met with all of the building principals, all of the directors. Uh, earlier this week, we met with the central office advisory committee and we will continue meeting with all of these groups and individuals up until, uh, the final budget is presented in June. And for the budget development, uh, the board approved the supply textbook and equipment budget back on January 17th. Here in a few moments, you'll hear from Dr. Darrow with the building and grounds budget that, uh, will ask for your approval. Next board meeting, May 2nd, we will, uh, come to you with a salary recommendation for fiscal year 20 and then on June 7th, I will present the final fiscal year 20 budget. Are there any questions? Yep, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you Kendra.
So we're not, there is no transfer this year into the insurance fund, uh, like last year, um, and you heard that hopefully we will get the 12% down through, uh, further analysis and bidding and then just looking at that, at a mouth at 1.16 is more than the projected revenue increase that we receive at, from 6308 to 6375 by a couple hundred thousand. Uh, we typically have passed a deficit spend budget, which is, uh, is what we've done, knowing that we would draw the balances down, uh, but we've not drawn the balances down, hence Jim's question to me every year about can we get closer on both, to which my answer is, we don't know what we're going to get from the state again this year, sounds like a broken record, so we're going to budget conservatively and, uh, you know, that's just kind of what we've done, try to offset the unknown, which is what we will, when the general assembly ends their work, we will already have had our salary, uh, recommendations to you and to commit to staff, uh, for next year. So while the governor wants to fully fund the formula, we appreciate what's been done in the past, we, we just kind of fund for the uncertainty, which is why those balances are the way they are, so.
Uh, I did some research during the campaign, just to, what I had written down, so that difference in what we budget revenue and, and, uh, expenses keeps growing, but our actual, uh, at the end of the year does not, it's kind of staying kind of constant, we're kind of spending what we bring in.
Correct.
Although that, that, uh, revenue and expenses widened quite a bit over the time I've been on the board, so I'll share that sheet with you sometime so you can see it. Well, I'm trying to say it doesn't concern me because we, you do a good job in spending the money that we receive, so.
I would be interested to see that as well, I've looked into it quite a bit. I've looked into it quite a bit this year to try to figure out, not necessarily change it, but just try to understand where it is that we're budgeting so high in certain areas and.
I'm just looking at the bottom line.
Yeah. We received the Camden Town, uh, salary survey information from those twenty-six schools that we compete against for staff, which is, uh, Camden does that survey for us. It's schools of like size, up and down forty-four. All of our conference schools up to Columbia, Jeff City, West Plains, uh, we're still one, two, and three in all categories except for first year teachers, uh, which we're not really far out of the first place for first year teachers. It, you can be, you can be two hundred and fifty to five hundred less than, uh, the school and be number sixteen. We're, we're holding consistent with where we've been before. We've shared that data with the committee too, because one of your goals as part of the school, uh, strategic plan is to attract and retain staff. So when eighty percent of our budgets, people, we, we pair people well and that allows us to do just that, so. We'll, we'll work to maintain that with them as well.
The other point on, on your presentation, I didn't comment, but the thirty-two, twenty-nine percent you're projecting now is encouraging based upon even last year, so. I know things will become more clearer as we go forward in the rest of the year, so hopefully that continues to improve.
Anything else for Kendra? Thank you. Uh, Dr. Dare is gonna present on the building and grounds, our fiscal year twen- uh, twenty twenty buildings and ground budget.
So as Kendra mentioned, as part of our budget process, um, we have the buildings and grounds budget for your review. Just as kind of a brief summary, overall, this represents our, uh, primarily our maintenance type items uh, and, and smaller minor improvements to our facilities. Uh, these are, these are not major construction projects or anything like that by any means. Based on a mix of identified areas of improvement, so areas where there have been, um, ongoing maintenance issues or those kind of things where we can improve our, our structures, uh, historical data. Uh, we keep rotations for roof replacements and those types of things. And then also items from the long range facility process. So maybe items that aren't in the long range facility plan necessarily, but were identified through that process as areas, uh, for improvement. Larry Moreland and his staff do a great job, uh, tracking and, and maintaining our facilities and we appreciate their efforts. So the reason we bring this to you at this time is a lot of this work will happen over the summer. So in your improvement, uh, hopefully your approval tonight will allow them some time to order supplies, make plans and, and begin that preparation because summer will be here very, very soon. So as we go through here, I, I have no intention of going line by line, but certainly if you have questions, uh, feel free to ask. Uh, but I would like to call out a couple of things that are maybe a little more unique, um, or, um, out of the ordinary, uh, from what you would see year to year. So the first pa- uh, this is in your packet on page, starting on page sixty. So if you go to sixty-one and sixty-two, those are district, uh, wide, expenditures representing a lot of our control systems, uh, things that expand across multiple buildings. Some of this is just built in, um, contingencies for the things that happen. Uh, we have a lot of equipment, things break down, it just happens that way. But one thing I would call out to you on this is, uh, there is a, a line item up toward the bottom of sixty-two for a salt spreader. Larry says if we want to be able to walk on the parking lot when it ices, we need a new spreader, so. That's a, that's a new thing. Moving on to Wyman, pretty standard, uh, items there. Uh, they are gonna replace the roof on the gazebo on the playground. Uh, it's just a maintenance item, it's, it's time. I'm going through these fairly quickly, again, please stop me if you have questions.
It, is that the one that's in the early childhood area?
Yes, yes. Mark Twain, um, you'll see, uh, a, um, area there for roof replacement over the kitchen. That's a regularly scheduled, um, rotation for the roofs. That's, uh, not a huge area, but, uh, keeps us in, in focus there. Moving on to Truman, uh, most of this is self-explanatory. You'll see one there for adding walls to the library. Uh, obviously the Truman library is in our facilities plan and we'll talk about that here in a little bit. But temporarily, uh, we've come up with a plan to put up some, some temporary walls to help remove the library from the hallway essentially. So if you've been in that facility, you realize that if you're in the hallway walking around the library, you're essentially in the library. It's very distracting, it's very difficult to maintain, uh, in a structural climate within that library. So this is not a, a permanent fix by any means, but it will help the situation. Middle school, uh, most of this is, is self-explanatory and a lot of these came from the, uh, facilities improvement process. And, uh, nothing really major to point out to you there unless you have questions. There is one area, uh, out at the softball field from the dugout to the seating area. It's kind of a ponding area, it's well-traveled and so it tends to hold water. So, uh, putting a sidewalk where everyone walks essentially. Junior high, uh, we began replacement of the library shelving, uh, this, this, just within the last few weeks. Uh, and then, uh, RTI folks will, will help us with that, um, make some improvements there and add a second round to, uh, complete that project this summer. Some acoustical panels that came from, uh, the second classroom that we're using for a band room at this point is, is kind of in the middle of the hallway and the sound is carrying outside the classroom. So that's an effort to help dampen that, won't solve the problem, but again. And then those are removable, so if, if things progress in the future, we can move those to other spaces. Also would point out, uh, replacement of landscape ties in the outdoor classroom. Uh, those are, are well-worn. What we've done is taken some of the landscaping blocks from the bar property and moved in there, but we didn't quite have enough. So this would be to purchase a few additional there to finish that project. High school, a couple of things to point out there, uh, some tile in the back hallway. That's the hallway between the main gym and the second gym and that back hall. Part of that was just age and part of that was, uh, some needed cleanup from the, the gym floor replacement in that second gym in this, uh, last summer. And then, uh, you'll see a couple of things there where there's some references to converting a shower area and some restrooms to your storage facilities. Those are unused areas and so it's just an effort to make them usable spaces. RTI, um, if you've been to Walmart, you can kind of get a better image of what we're talking about here. But, uh, we were looking at the tile in the third hallway, which is mostly, um, shop spaces. Uh, that needs to be replaced, but rather than replace that, we think we're gonna take it down to the concrete and polish the concrete. We think it'll hold up better and be a more viable space there, so, uh, that's what Walmart's doing. So, you know, if that's what Walmart's doing, that's what we're gonna do.
Read any dust.
RTC, uh, really nothing major there, uh, same with, uh, uh, central office. The, uh, custodial maintenance supplies is a standard line item, uh, so seventy-two, seventy-three. Getting over to seventy-four, uh, transportation, we've got some, uh, a little bit higher amount there for asphalt repairs than what may be normal. We've got some areas where the buses park, uh, where the, the, you know, the, just over time, they've wore the, the asphalt out. So we're gonna cut those areas out and replace them probably with concrete, so. And then last are the, are the, uh, what I would call maybe the little, little more involved projects. Again, not, not going through all those, but you'll see, uh, some, some, several areas of roof replacements. Those are scheduled, uh, for the most part. And then a couple of canopies, awnings type things, middle school and junior high. Then car circle lines, just to help with student, students getting back and forth. And, uh, some heat and air controls. We've had some issues in the high school kitchen area, uh, between the air conditioner and the chillers and all those things. So adding a control system to help keep those systems from overheating and overcooling so that we maintain a system warm. Overall, reduction of about, uh, twenty-eight thousand from last year. Again, appreciate Larry and his, his efforts in, uh, making our facilities look nice and functional for our students.
And several items from the facilities plan, concerns from like the, uh, bench covers for the student drop-offs.
Yes.
Yeah, so. On all the roof areas, I know there's a plan in the facilities plan that is color-coded.
Yes.
So it would maybe, I don't know if these relate to those areas?
Some of them do, most of them do, Jim, yeah.
It would be good to get those updated and maybe even put on this, uh, your penciled plan, so you know, hey, we did the pink area. Just ten years from now, they'll be looking for that information.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's right.
When did we do that?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Dare.
Any other questions for Dr. Dare? Uh, do I have a motion to approve the buildings and grounds budget?
I'll make the motion that we approve the buildings and grounds budget.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, a couple of Board of Education future issues. Our next board meeting is May second, also May sixteenth, June sixth, just so you know, that's my birthday.
June sixth is?
June sixth is, and June twenty-eighth. Just saying.
Good to know.
Yeah, two birthdays, June sixth and June twenty-eighth.
Huh, just June sixth, Tony. Then we have another meeting, June twenty-eighth, I believe that's a morning meeting, is that right? Probably. Okay. All business, uh, we'll talk about our long range facility and program update, Dr. Dare and Dr. Zallas.
You're gonna hear less from me and more from Dr. Dare and Mark Ruther, our architects here tonight, so, hi, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Between Dr. Dare and Mrs. King and Mrs. Ervoss and Mark, we've done, we've done a lot of work on the survey. Uh, you're gonna see a couple examples of what the survey might look like, but more impressively maybe be the visualization of some of these things that we've been talking about, so. With that, take it away.
Okay. Uh, again, pleased to have Mark with us tonight and, and he's gonna bring the, the power tonight. He gets, he gets the flash and glory. No, we appreciate the work that he and his staff have done. They've been very responsive, um, as we've changed our minds. And, uh, gone through these, but, so what you, what you have in front of you, you have a little packet there. Uh, keep in mind, we're still in draft form. So understand that, that we're not done, uh, and, and we're still tweaking as we go. But we're getting very close and, and it's getting exciting. So I do want to walk you through, yeah, just hold on that all minute, we'll, we'll come back to it. You're good. Uh, walk you through, what we wanted to give you was, uh, just an idea of kind of what we're looking to put in the survey so that you get an idea of some of the images that go along with it. Uh, so if you'll just walk through me, we're gonna go through these fairly quickly, you're familiar with the survey. Uh, but I want to talk you through some of the imagery and why we've chosen what we've chosen. So a couple of overall comments. One would be, uh, we've really tried to come at this with, with a focus on a balance. And that balance between, we want to provide enough information to, to plant ideas and thoughts so that, so that we can get good responses and good feedback from our community. But we certainly don't want to put so much detail and information out that we lock people down into thinking that, that this is the thing. Um, so we've tried to keep that balance as we go through and I think you'll see that. So question one, uh, obviously is safety and security. It's hard to put, uh, a, a picture with that, so to speak. So what we, what we've done instead is, is focused on the areas that we've looked at and talked about. And we've tried to give kind of a breakdown of what those things could look like. And again, hopefully, oh, leaving that opens, uh, to, to suggestions. So there's four main areas. Again, I'm not gonna read this to you, but just in summary, uh, entry access, so we're talking about secure access, secure doorways, uh, electronic door locks, those types of things. Visitor and volunteer tracking, we have a lot of people in and out of our buildings for very positive reasons. Uh, but it would be nice to have a little, little better grasp on who's in and out and where. And then in the event there were an incident, we could also know instantly who is in the building that may not normally be there, so we can account for everyone. Communications, uh, this involves internal and external. So just as an example, one of the systems we looked at would, would be, we would be able to interrupt all forms of technology in the, in a building. So it would take over projector screens, computer screens, Chromebooks, all those things with information if there were an emergency. The nice thing about that system is it's not just a fire alarm, it would actually provide instructions on what to do. So we can be very specific with those messages and, uh, try to get the information out very quickly. The second piece of the communications is our external communications. Obviously, our, our first responders and community, um, organizations are very good to work with us and we appreciate that relationship. But being able to, to, to communicate with them directly and quickly, uh, it may be even with just a push of a button, um, those types of things. So that we get, we get the fastest response possible. And then attendance and reunification. If for whatever reason we had to evacuate a building, uh, what would be our, our best way to get parents and students reunited so that we could track who had been taken care of and who we still had to account for? So that's that piece. Question two, I'm gonna go through fairly quickly. Mark, we'll come back to that one and, and give you some more detail and kind of talk through the, the big process there on, on some of those pieces. So what we've done is tried to give everyone a site plan, which gives them an overall picture of where an addition could possibly go. And then a little bit more of a detailed floor plan so they can kind of orient themselves within the building structure itself and what that might look like. So for each of these projects, you'll, you'll see that as we go through. So question two A, uh, is the standalone auditorium. So you'll see a site plan of where that would sit in relation to the high school, the surrounding areas. And then you'll see a, um, a floor plan and, and how that kind of ties into those entryways. Also, part of that process is the library renovation at the high school. So we've included, uh, some of the, the renderings that Brandy, um, Graden did, I'm sorry, Bailey Graden did. Uh, and, uh, I apologize if your pictures aren't super clear, the, the photocopies are a little darker than the actual images, but we, we want those to be seen as well. Question two B is the, uh, building of a new gymnasium, field house type situation with the renovation of the existing gym into a performing arts center. Uh, and again, Mark will, will take a lot more detail, take you down a little more detailed path with that here in just a few minutes. But again, site plan to show the proposed gymnasium, a little bit more of a floor plan to show the two, uh, structures. And then again, the library renovation. Now, that seems redundant, however, we would like to be able to put this information out so that if someone wanted to come back to the survey at some point to look at specific items, they could do that and get the full picture. So there is some redundancy through these, but we did that intention. Question three, performing arts spaces and, uh, conversion of the existing spaces into some weight room facilities and, and, uh, physical education spaces. Again, and I, and I can't say enough about, uh, Mark and his staff for trying to keep these consistent, uh, in the best way possible so that, uh, we're, we're giving the same type of information on each question, so there, there hopefully be clear in what we're proposing. There are a couple of options in this one. These were taken from the facility, long range facility plan. We cleaned up the images to, to focus in on specifically what our survey questions are asking for. So that, that's the process we went through. Couple of different options here, uh, as far as location of where those new, uh, classrooms could go for the performing arts and then showing those renovated spaces as well. Question four is the science room renovation. So we've included, again, a floor plan to kind of show where in the building those lie. But also, uh, just as a placeholder at this point, our intent is to put some pictures in so people get an idea of the, the things that we're wanting to update, um, and why we, we may need, uh, to do that at this time. Question five, uh, deals with expansion of our pre-K program. Just as a reminder, uh, of course, we, we are talking about a waiting list and, and some closures of some programs within the community. So, uh, we felt like we needed to look at this as a possibility and see what people thought. So what this involves, and, and we will add some, um, text boxes, so to speak, on these images to help guide, guide folks through these. But this shows what could possibly be done at each of the elementary schools. So again, not saying that we would do it at each, but showing where if we went to Truman to do an addition, where that could possibly be. So you'll see, uh, proposed addition at Mark Twain, then you'll see a proposed addition at Truman. The proposed addition at Truman includes the library renovation, but we also, again, will repeat that for the library renovation question. We feel like those are very much in the same. Also on the Truman, I should mention that we, we incorporated the security component because that would be a part of that process. We would put a new secure entrance on the front of Truman as part of that library renovation. So it's, it's, it, it's hard to separate those pieces because they are very much tied together. And same thing at Wyman, you'll see the classroom, possible classroom additions there. Question six is the Truman library. Again, same images, but you'll see the, the proposed, um, secure entrance with the classroom additions there and the renovation of the existing space into a, a new library space. Pictures of the library, and again, we'll add some captions to these to show that, uh, those are indeed hallways and common areas outside of those bookshelves, to kind of help paint the picture, because not everyone's going to have been in the library. And we'll, we'll, Gina took these pictures for us, and we appreciate that. We'll, we'll scale them down and crop them and, and caption them, so that they, they tell the story that we want them to tell there. And then, last but certainly not intended to be least is, uh, RTI. So, you will see, um, just some proposed lab spaces renovations, um, shop space renovations, and then also, we included restroom renovations there, because those are a little overdue. So, one thing I will mention before I, I, I turn it over to Mark is, if you look at, um, the question, the actual question for number six, uh, that deals with Truman Library, sorry, I skipped this, that's my fault. We added a statement about the safety component, uh, because again, it was just really impossible to separate that, so. Just wanting to make sure people understand that we are intentionally putting that out there for consideration. Ginger, um, do you want to pull up that survey? Ginger worked, um, uh, we, we've started trying to place this into an electronic form. Obviously, we have work to do, um, scroll up just a little bit, Myra, please. So, um, again, we'll, we'll clean that up, kind of give a nice introduction page, and scroll down, please. You'll see the same information that is, that you have on paper in front of you. We have played with this and looked at it on phones, tablets, those kind of things, so that's part of this process. That's, uh, making sure that it's, it's viewable from whatever format people will have. We're having very good luck with that, so I'm, I'm pleased to tell you, I think we're in a good place there. So, as you go through, we'll have these separated out, so the questions will be separated. They'll get to a question one, so question one is that safety and security. And then, there will be a link there, so Myra, if you'll click that blue link. Here, okay, scroll down, right there, that blue line.
It's a test.
You may have to double-click it. There you go. So, as they click on the links, it will bring up the images that we include. On the phones, um, it, it was working very well, the, the, the language is there and everything. When you click the link, the one thing I would say is, you do have to turn your phone sideways to get a good image, but it, it does work well. So, we'll play with that a little bit. And then, Myra, if you'll go back to the previous tab, and scroll on down. Again, we're, we're, we're in the process of building this, so it's not live. But, um, we're getting there, so, uh, go, yeah, go to next. No, you're good. Oh, is it already there? Okay. All right. So, the other one, we, we just loaded a couple of these to kind of give you an idea. So, if you'll click on one of those blue links, it doesn't matter which one, probably the bottom one, just for administration's sake. So, again, you'll see, it's the same images that we've, we've given you in paper form that will load, so that they can see what we're talking about. Absolutely.
Hey, Kyle, what, you have a master copy. We, yesterday, when we walked down the hall, we found three typos, which is where we've looked at it. And nausea. So, just as we were sitting here, Charlotte pointed one out to me, and the question three. Uh, second sentence, there is only, could be a one. The word one.
Yep, okay.
So, I don't know if it's, it, on the electronic version, whether it transpose the same way.
I don't know.
Is it crazy?
It is crazy. We've, we've all looked at it a hundred times, so, yeah. Thanks. Okay, uh, with that, I'm gonna let, uh, Mark take over here and show you what we've been working on on the, uh, Performing Arts Center process.
Okay. If you bring up, could have kind of explained a little bit of the process. It's been kind of exciting, because when we started talking about this, I talked to, um, Kyle about how we want to move ahead and, um, possibly get into a 3D walkthrough of the facility. So, that's, it's a building process. We don't have this finalized building walkthrough tonight. However, what I kind of want to explain to, to you.
Collective, aw.
We have one, but it's some, it's some images we're gonna be able to show you, to kind of show you where we're going, because it's, we have to have it all completed before we can actually walk through the site or walk through the building to bring it all together, because we're not. But I think you're gonna see a lot of progress as far as where we've been. And the first image, um, if you could bring that up. Uh, first go to the, say that again? So, one of the things that we did, we thought this was kind of a, a unique, a unique opportunity to bring in some, uh, technology that is what we call LiDAR, uh, technology, and actually had a, a drone on site, and we act, walked, actually walked through the facility with this handheld device. And we can, we can walk through this and actually move it, but there's so, it's basically, it's collecting data points. It's taking light and it's bouncing back, and it's putting all these millions of points in, in a, in a point cloud. From that, we take it back to the office, and with Revit, we're able to build a model and of this. So, this is the LiDAR scan, and you can see on the bottom, the, the ones on the top are from the exterior, from the, from the drone, which, the day we were trying here, we were trying to get it, and it was, uh, sleep was coming, and, but I thought, we can't miss this date, because we're on spring break, so we, we went ahead and did it, but, um, it's a pretty interesting, uh, way of pulling all this information together. On the, on the bottom one is the actual inside of the auditorium. And you can actually see that there were, um, the girls were practicing basketball. You can kind of see, it's kind of, kind of interesting, too. But, um, and so, I just wanted to show you this, um, and not actually go through and show you the 3D of it. But now, the next image would be the, the video. What's, so from this, we actually took it, and it's gonna move pretty quickly, but I don't want to, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but just kind of the, the process. So, from there, then we start to build this, this model from the, uh, of where, where you're at. And so, now, we're building all these, the model from this image, um, or from the point cloud. I keep referring to the point cloud, but, um, it's just pretty interesting to, uh, to get that. So, then, um, and all those little dots are all of the little points that are reflecting back as we, and we can get to a point, as you go through all these spaces, you can get down to a sixteenth of an inch. And, and from this also, it really helped, because you start seeing how many different levels we're trying to tie into as we go into this. And we've even taken it from the front door on, or from the door down in the lower level to come up, but, um, just with the time, a lot of, we just, but you start to see the stage, the lower level, and you walk out, and you've got all these different levels as you walk out into the lobby. So, it was, it's just a, a, it's, it's pretty fascinating, uh, as we go through this. So, the next, um, from that, if you go to the floor plan. So, from the floor plan, then we started to lay out, um, a lot of different seating arrangements. We, you know, we're still within the range of what we think we were talking about in our, our facilities, uh, planning. But you walk in, you see the, the bottom portion of that is the stage, and we've kind of, uh, added some, uh, stage on a thrust to be able to walk out past the, 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 uh, proscenium itself. And then, a little bit to the left in the front, in the lower, I'm gonna call it the lower house and the upper house. But the lower house, we've carved out an area to the left for an orchestra, uh, to possibly have a band or orchestra to the side. If you don't have those, uh, functioning at that, uh, on that particular performance, you might be able to put up additional seats. So, from that, um, then you, you, the, the seating, from when you come in on the stage, you're gonna go up at a, uh, one in 10 or an ADA accessibility, uh, ramp to the, of a arc of a intermittent, intermediate, um, walkway. So that you'll have a place there that the people, uh, ADA can actually come up and have additional seating up there. And then, from the back up in the upper house, there's additional seating to get to a control booth in the top, and then also, a, a lighting platform in the back. So, if you look at the, uh, auditorium section to the upper right, that is a section where you can kind of see the low slope in the front of the house. And then, when you get to that walkway, you'll then go up at a steeper rake on the upper portion of that. The bottom right kind of shows you that 3D model that we're starting to show, and the, the white boxes in there represent the clouds. So, the roof's been taken off, and you can see the, the roof, the, the clouds in, in the space. So, we haven't developed the backstage of, of the stage and the back rooms, but now that we've got the model, we can all, we can start. And you can kind of see the pixelation of the, of the, of the section and also the 3D model that it's, that's that point cloud again that, that we developed. So, or, um, the next photo.
Amazing, isn't it?
It is.
So, the next.
Wow.
So, the next photos or, or the images, or when you'll walk in, and what we've done is, the, um, wherever you see the, the, the frame or the purlins from the, we've put, um, some drywall, splayed walls, I'm gonna call them splayed walls, so that they're angled, so that it helps the acoustics in the, in the space that it's got, it won't let the, the sound die. Up on the back wall, there'll be acoustical panels to absorb the sound, so as it goes past your ear, it'll, it'll die in the back of the, of the, of the space. You can kind of see how the lower slope, if you, from the facilities committee, if you remember, we had kind of talked originally about, do we have that front space as a, as a flat area that you have stackable seating? Dr. Darren, when we, we did that first, and we can put it in a drawing, it looks really pretty to have all these stackable seedings in an arrangement. But the second people walk in and start arranging, it's gonna be loud, it's gonna be, so we kind of went to this of the, of the permanent seats in the front as well. But on a lower slope, so that you can accommodate the ADA or the handicap accessibility. And then, you'll have steps to the sides. On each side, you'll go up to that intermediate rail, and then you can go up into the upper seats. But the, the bright, um, there would be a wainscot going up, and, um, we've talked about a lot of things on how we could put a wood texture and, um, a lot of interesting and, and exciting types of things that we can do there. But then, there would be a light shelf that you could put LED lighting up there, and we've done some really interesting things with LED lighting, to where you can change the light to where it's, uh, if it's, if it's a performance, that you want to have a lot of interesting lighting and, um, change colors during the performance, you can do that with the, and the display will help kind of, kind of provide a more interesting, um, appearance. The, the light clouds you see up, or the sound clouds up there, those are up there to help deflect the sound, uh, so that it doesn't, um, you put acoustic back, um, on the back of those, so that it just kind of dies as it goes up into that, up in that area. But, um, if you go now down to the bottom one, um, that'll kind of show from the back lighting platform down to the, um, to the stage, and you can kind of see that thrust stage where, depending upon the type of performance, you could pull, you could bring that, uh, they could come out into the actual, into the house itself. So, that's up on the very top, on the left-hand side, looking down with a, with a, a light, um, uh, for lighting platform. But as we go through, there's still a lot, uh, that we want to render in the actual materials. But the thought would be, we, we talked about there being about a 20 to 30 second video when we do this, so that it doesn't get too long. And we would come in from the, from the lobby area in, maybe walk up to the top, and then scan back around, so you can actually see this image, but it would be a, a walkthrough of that, so. And the other thing, too, is when we start loading this and we start building this after we're done, it could be as long as like a, almost a weekend, that we would have to set it before, so as the, the model starts to render all the different materials. So, we'll be in, talking about a number of different things before we actually, but this is the exciting part.
Yeah, it is.
To really start throwing this together, and when you start looking these spaces, you think, what can you, can you make this look like? And I'm real happy with how it started to come together, so. Comments, thoughts?
The, the finished video would be intended to have that kind of clarity, as we're seeing here.
Yes.
But in motion and be able to go through and get a quick scan of everything.
And even a little bit more, and even a little bit more clarity with trying to pick up some of the materials and the, um, one of the things, if you go back down to the other, or go up, I guess, one of the things we were looking at, we went online, we were looking at all these different options. I don't know if any of you have been up to Umsel, uh, University of Missouri-St. Louis. On that wall, the, in back of the lower house, but on the up, in front of the upper house, you can see some little triangles that, there's a type of seating that they've used up to Umsel, where you can actually, it looks, it's almost, it's, it's just a little, uh, basically a, a tri, or a rectangle on the wall. You can actually pull down the seat, and it reflects, it, it, it comes down, and there's like an accordion that comes down, and you can sit on it, and then when you're not using it, they just, they just go back up. So, it's something that we found really interesting to, to be able to increase the seating.
Yeah.
But if it's not a, not a big time performance, you just don't use it. And then, so, so that's why we've left the aisle at about six to seven feet, uh, seven to eight feet, so that if you bring that down, you'd be able to, so, we, we want to go look at the seating. We actually have contacted the rep and actually, but it was, and I have to, they said you could actually put 1,200 pounds on this, and I want to try it out, if I can sit on it. But it's, it's really significant, because we were really, we spent a lot of time trying to think about how, how to increase the, the volume in the seats in here, so we still have to look.
What would that potentially add, if it worked out the way that it sounded like?
That, that would add about 43, 44 seats for that, so, um, we, we just, we still have to do a little bit of research.
Sure, sure.
But we're still in the range of where we, we said, um, you can tell that I'm real hesitant to tell you how many seats are in there.
No kidding.
But it, but it was, but it's in the range of where we talked about in the, um.
I think 1,100.
It was, I think we posted 720 to 750, and we're on, we're in that range. Maybe with these, we could get a little bit higher. But it's kind of a, it's kind of a, it's any decision we make to get a more comfortable seat in there, you add another inch, two inches, next thing you know, you're cutting the seat out. So, now it could become comfort level, it becomes staggering, staggering the seats, see, instead of the sightlines, and making sure we've got really good egress out of there, because what's more frustrating is going into a performance and standing in a dependent field 3D. So, we'll be talking about that, and it's a real balance, but I'm just happy we're, we're real close to where we had talked about with, um, and the lighting. I, I'm just, this is exciting, but we've kind of, I, I hope, um, this is what you, it's not moving yet.
So, Sedalia has a new auditorium that was fully funded by a, a local donor, and, and they have no aisles in the center. Only, and I said, well, how, how do you do that? She says, well, she, the donor, didn't want any aisles, because she didn't want anybody getting up in the middle of her performance. So, when she wrote the check, she got what she wanted.
Wow.
Got what she wants.
Yeah.
And so, what we were thinking here is you'd have, you'd have down in the lower area, we originally, if you remember, we had a center aisle. I thought, we, we, Kyle, we were looking at, like, those are the five seats, you've got the center, so we moved. the center, so we moved the thirds in the front, and then you'd go up, and then you'll have an aisle in the back of the lower house, and then a main aisle there, so we had an aisle on each side for more flexibility to get out.
Right. Looks great.
Can you scroll down to the lower picture real quick, where you can see the stage? Now, I don't know how, how set the space is, but that opening seems very small to me.
The existing stage.
Gotcha.
It, it does, it does, with the stage, and it's funny you picked up on that, because when I saw this, like, boy.
Well, my son's in band, and I know how much space they take, like, they would, they don't.
Yeah. And, and that's kind of why we brought the, the stage to the front, brought the thrust out. As we get into it, I mean, we may want to look at doing some things, and we did, we did something like this in Washington School, where we actually took out and put side stage on each side of it, and then you had the curtain, so really, you open up all this, the main stage, and one on each side, where it kind of opens it up. But we want, it's, it's a real balance between what's as far, and it's going to be for all the productions, but I can't say I know the structure back there, I'd be able to do that, but that's definitely, it's a very good point, so you got to really look at how, what the main works, what we can do to make it usable for all the different functions that they take place.
It's getting exciting. Very exciting.
I love it. Love the picture. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
We're your first project of building one, that, digitally, I'm saying, I mean, you know, not architecturally, because you're the digital world.
We, it's, it's, to see this, it was pretty amazing, it really, and so, we, I've kind of worked with Dr. Darren and Dr. Alice about how we can kind of share some of this. So, all of this, all of the movement, you know, we're, just so you can have a little fun, but it's a cool, really interesting process. If you're ever near our office, come on by, and we can even show you some of it.
Well, it's hard to even describe it into words, because even renovate doesn't fit.
No.
I still, I have multiple time, how, how to best state this.
Repurpose was one of the ways we've used it, and that kind of resonates, but again, we need to be talking about it. And the other thing is really important, as we go through the images, to make sure that we're giving you the type of images that can help do what you want to do.
Right.
Because it's, okay?
All right. Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Good to see you. Oh, I don't know what to say after all that.
I know. So exciting.
Lauren, it's your turn.
Yes. Okay, everyone, so, as you all know, spring is very busy for students, so this is going to be a bit long, but please bear with me, I don't want to leave anybody out. So, first of all, in the world of sports, the junior high had their first home track meet today. I'm assuming that either just finished, or maybe it's still going on. Yesterday, we had our Special Olympics track meet, maybe you saw that on some of the school's Instagram pages. So, that was held at Waynesville, and basically, we had some athletes from the high school volunteer to go, and they all got paired up with a student who was in our special education program, and everybody loves that day. You could tell they all had a great time. And so, the students, the special education students from the middle school, the junior high, and the high school participated. And also, a fun part of that, we had some of our students line the hallways, so on their way out, the kids got to run through a little wall of kids cheering for them, so that was fun.
That's great.
As Mr. Hounson said, our EOC's testing is going to start next week at the high school, and it'll run for the next two weeks, I believe, okay? And this is very exciting for me. You know, our Echo newspaper and magazine, well, we actually compete through the Missouri Interscholastic Press Association, and that's sponsored through Mizzou's Journalism Day, and our publications for our newspaper and magazine won an excellent rating.
Yay.
So, that's exciting. I'm pretty sure, don't quote me, but I'm pretty sure that's in the top 5% of submissions in excellent rating. And then, our RHSecho.com, you should go check it out, that got an honorable mention. Okay. We had our National Junior Honor Society induction a couple of weeks ago, I told you about that. Well, tonight, actually, right now, is the National Honor Society, the high school induction ceremony, and then, that's going on at the junior high. So, our seniors are going to be graduating and leaving honor society, but a cool part of that, as you all probably know, they give out awards to their most influential teachers, and then, the juniors will be seniors next year, will get inducted. The core rewards luncheon, that's every quarter, is going to be going on, let's see, next week, I'm not sure exactly what day, at the high school, and 18th, thank you. And that's for any student who has a 3.5 GPA, or if they move their GPA up a level, then they will qualify. As we've been talking about auditoriums, our, we have a district-wide play coming up, that's going to be next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and that's Charlotte's Web. And I said district-wide, but it, because it's going to have students from elementary, middle school, junior high, and high school, so everybody's going to be involved in that, so it'll be pretty fun. The Truman kindergarten is headed to Purina, I think that's how you say it? Purina Farms next week, I remember doing that. And then, Wyman Cheer Camp is taking place next week, I'm not sure about the other elementary schools. And then, probably some of the biggest announcements I have are about our academic team and our math team, because I think we should all be very proud of them. So, our academic team went to districts last week, and they got first place all around at districts. And also, Elena Bai, she is a sophomore, she got first place at districts. And David Didden, he got sixth place. He's also a sophomore. And then, some of our students from the junior high and the high school went to the Pummel Math Relays, I believe that was yesterday or the day before, and that's held at Missouri State University. And we competed in both teams and individually. So, for our team events, we got first place in our Algebra I team, our Algebra II team, and our Geometry team for our class. And then, we are, we're in class four, and then compared to all of the classes, our teams got first place in Algebra II and Geometry.
Wow, great.
And then, remember, David Didden and Elena Bai, well, let's see, what did they get? Let's see, David Didden got first place for his competition, which was in math reasoning, and then Elena Bai got second place in that same competition, so.
Lots of them.
Yeah. And Sudara Hoar got fifth place in his, I, I think he was also math reasoning, I can't tell you exactly what he competed in, but he got fifth place in his competition. And Sudara's a junior, if you didn't know. And then, at the end of that math competition, kind of the biggest event of the day, is they have a, all, all the schools that compete get to send four people to do kind of like a fast round tournament, and that's the biggest award of the day, and we won. We got first place.
Yeah.
And I talked to Mrs. McCarthy, and she said that's the first time she can remember us winning, so.
Wonderful.
Yes. And then, almost done. Prom, prom's coming up, May 4th. I won't read off all the candidates, but we announced our candidates. And then, our band concert is going to be May 6th and 7th, and the reason I'm saying that tonight is because if you want to go, you need to buy tickets, and those are going to start being on sale April 22nd, and you have to buy those online on Leech's website, or go to the box office to order them. And also, district-wide news, it's Ashley Barth's birthday, so if any of you still have her contact information, you should wish her a happy birthday, and I think that is all. Thank you.
One of the candidates.
Yeah, she is a prom candidate.
May the fourth be with you.
That should have been our prom theme.
No, you should have a Star Wars theme.
That should be the.
Could be the decorations.
Wow, lots, lots going on.
Lots going on.
Exciting.
Thank you very much. Okay. Written reports are in the back of your agenda.
Sure. Attendance didn't look that bad last month, compared to.
We recovered after spring break nicely, too.
Yeah, good.
The little downturn that we had, we seem to be past it, which is nice.
Well, Sarah, we had pre-K and kindergarten registration screenings these past, these past two weeks with the PUPS program. We were at 134 kids. We actually helped screen 14 St. Pat's kids, did a total of 262 screenings in five days for preschool. The kindergarten registration screening, 114 students this last few days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Mark Twain, Monday, Truman Tuesday, Wyman Wednesday. We have, keep in mind, we have 155 kids already enrolled in PUPS, so they'll automatically roll into kindergarten. So, we're two, I think we're two students up, 269 from where we were this time last year. We'll end up, you know, in the low 300s to upper 200s, as we have in years past. So, kudos to Mrs. Brown and all the staff members that came in here, online registration, work like clockwork, and it really makes things run smoothly. So, thanks to technology and all the staff members that helped, so. Looking forward to our new young Bulldogs hitting the, hitting our schools, so.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, can I get in a motion to go into a closed session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Tony?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, yes. Okay, we're enclosed.